Good evening, welcome to the special city council for special city council meeting for Tuesday, February 12th, 2019. Clerk Reed, would you call the law?
Yes, Alderman Berthwaite, Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Bruce Simmons, Alderman Sufferton, Alderman Gribble.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming, Alderman Fisk.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you very much, and I will be serving as mayor pro temp this evening, so chairing the meeting. Thank you all for being here. The first item on the agenda is public comment. We have three individuals signed up, so as the rules provide, three minutes apiece. And first is Dorian Price, then Wendy Pollak and Ray Friedman.
Do you have a phone?
No, you can stand, I guess.
Do we have a microphone?
I think if you just stand. These microphones, I think, should pick up hopefully.
There's a camera right over there.
Thank you. I'd like to ask if there can be accommodations for people who are taking the bus from Edgewater and the like who are coming here and are a little bit late. So if you can accommodate those extra speakers at the end or something, I'd appreciate it, since I got word that they're running late also. I spoke yesterday at city council and those matters are still very near and dear to me for lots of reasons. And so it also became obvious, when you sort through things long enough, some things come out as something that could be helping everybody. And the one thing that I didn't think was top of my list, and may not of others, since I don't have it in front of me, that one about the changes to, excuse me, affordable housing. So I go through pages, I can relate to pages. So the one that, if you bear with me here, I had this actually written down. And on page six, it's about affordable housing. I'm just going over pages. And in terms of funding, I didn't see written, but just want to remind that I know that Housing and Homelessness has been working on also adding to funding options, and this sort of seemed to limit it. So I think we should keep it open, because there's plenty of options out there that haven't been explored yet. So I wouldn't want to close that down if somebody's going to the letter of the law versus the spirit of the law. There should be priorities listed instead of saying this and this. Something's going to be higher priority than other. They weren't listed in there. In terms of, when you talk about competing with developers for homes, it should be also the owners, not just buyers, but the owners are trying to save their homes. And they're competing with developers who are coming in and maybe asking to, or realtors who are coming in and trying to convince them they should sell their home. That's real, I know, it's happened to me. In terms of units, I think you have to specify both home, separate from apartment, because it's been confusing terminology up until now, it's been referring mostly to rentals. We know now that we're going to talk about preservation of homes. Page seven, the equity in city operations and enforcement and fees are huge. That became huge just recently. And in terms of enforcement in particular, and the police ran into a problem, as we all know, in terms of how they enforce, and I think that should be citywide, which means a changing culture. I've had such a great experience with the police sorting through things than what the city has been faced with, as I mentioned before, for three years. And I'm very cautious to say that, and it's taken me three years to say it. Okay, one more thing, debt collection, watch what's regard to how you treat the poor. Don't not tell them what they can do. Don't, I mean, stop not empowering, stop taking their power away. Start empowering them. If they want to have information, then you help them. If they can negotiate, tell them they can negotiate. Don't tell them it's an either/or, and when your either/or is worse than the situation they're in, you have to use the judgment, because the law might say the person that's asking for something might be right legally, but morally, it's a different story. So I'm saying we have to have a culture, which the police are now adopting, I think is a great initiative, but when I have problems that show me two different sides, yeah, two different sides of a culture problem, it points to the fact that it's going higher up than the two different silos I was dealing with, and so we need consideration of changing culture.
Thank you. And I think, was it Wendy Pollak?
Yes.
Hi, how are you? Thank you.
Thank you, yes, just to be very brief. I co-chair the environment board, and the board would like to communicate to the council that we really urge you to incorporate the goals and priorities of the Climate Action Resilience Plan in your goals for this year. I see there some of the aldermen did make that comment on the draft, and we would really like to underscore that a lot of work went into this plan. It's really of urgent importance nationally and locally, and there are many different ways that could be done, whether as an overall goal or by looking for various places to expand on some of the goals that are in the draft, but we really hope to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ray Friedman?
Thank you. I'm sorry the mayor couldn't be here. I wanted to respond to his letter that he was concerning the city manager, but basically concerning Alderman Sufferton. After I read his letter and his review, I sent him a quick email that said, "Tom, I just read your letter posted in Six Ward News. I just wanted to say thank you very much. You have brought some of my faith back to humanity. I can't tell you how much it means to all of us, knowing there's someone on city council who's willing to stand up for the citizens of Evanston in all aspects of decision-making and spending and being transparent. I wanted to ask you first if it would be okay if I comment on your letter at upcoming city council meetings." I just wanted to read that, so it was just a commentary, an email that I sent. That's how I interpreted it, as helping, you know, wanting more transparency, more communication. So this is my comments for tonight. Concerning 2019-2020 goals for City of Evanston, I'd really like to see two huge items be addressed. Number one, open up communication with the residents, answering questions and concerns, and be more transparent. No closed-door meetings, let's open up the discussions to include the public. Number two, can we please balance the budget without raising our property taxes, as we promised us last year, as was promised us last year. Since I moved here only three years ago.
Mr. Friedman, hold on a second.
Yes.
Actually, you know, we've got an open chair there. Apparently, this microphone's not picking up so well.
You're going to close her too.
Maybe you have a seat in the.
You want me to start all over?
No, just go ahead. It'll just be easier to hear, so go ahead.
You can leave your remarks too, if you want to.
Sure, sure.
Here, you can sit down.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Excellent. I get promoted?
Sure.
But do I get paid more? I need a raise. Okay, where was I? You want me to read my letter?
No, no, just continue.
Just continue from where you were.
Okay, all right. "Since I moved here only three years ago, people are screaming 'budget crisis.' We've been hearing this over and over for the last three years. Why is this? I'm not passing judgment on anyone, and I know it takes full city council to make these financial decisions. Some of these financial decisions are huge decisions and have huge consequences. And that is why these discussions needs to take place with the whole community, but also needs to be approved by the majority of the community. You know, in talking with the community and several employees, the overwhelming majority say that most city council members, as well as most of city employees, are very nice, helpful, and respectful. And many of them have added, sometimes, 'too-nice.' When's the last time you were accused of being too-nice? Please, let's do the right thing for 2019 and 2020 budget, and create a balanced budget that we often live with it, without raising any property taxes, and open the lines of communication to include the whole community with more transparency, and create a mechanism to address citizens' questions and concerns." Thank you.
Thank you very much. I noticed we had a couple people who arrived late, maybe, or maybe, did you want to speak at public comment?
No, Dorian's.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else feel good?
He's one of the friends I approached to ask.
Very good, yeah.
We didn't have communications with the clerk.
Do you have any communications?
I do have one communication. Yesterday during public comment, I think it's important for, the deputy clerk sat in yesterday, and we had a conversation today about public comment, and I think it's important for someone on the dais, when disparaging remarks toward a particular racial group or racist remarks are made, or borderline racist remarks are made by someone in the community, we shouldn't let that go unchecked. And we should make sure that someone on the dais either steps in and makes sure that those comments aren't allowed to be stated in this platform.
That was a, I think, for most, if not all of us, that was a difficult few minutes That took place after we had our meeting earlier in the day on ethics is different, but we kind of touched on some concepts that tie into the, you know, what the rules and procedures are. I think that it makes a lot of sense to think about, particularly in light of Mr. Friedman's comments. It's difficult, because people don't feel like we're getting communication both ways, but also maybe set some more clear-cut guidelines on what appropriate comment is and isn't. I very much value free speech and the opportunity to speak, but we have to, you know, make sure that that's done in a respectful fashion. So thank you for those comments.
All right, on to our exciting special order business tonight. We have the staff requesting that the council discuss and adopt city council goals, which we are here to do. And Mr. City Manager, I think you have a bit of a presentation for us to kind of walk us through some of that.
Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, members of the council, good evening. We talked about having this meeting several weeks ago. It was postponed because of weather, but one of the things that the council agreed to do was to look at the current goals that we have and provide some feedback on them. So in your packet on page two is the document that Jim has here on the screen. So perhaps I can just read across the top to remind everyone what the current city council goals are. Let me also preface by saying that in an earlier conversation, the council felt it was appropriate that rather than just selecting goals for 2019, that perhaps a two-year cycle was appropriate. So unless Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, there's any objections, we're going to go on the presumption that the council has agreed to that, and so whatever would be decided would carry forward through to December 31, 2020. But again, the current goals for '18 were invest in city infrastructure and facilities, enhance community development and job creation, expand affordable housing options, further police-community relations initiatives, ensure equity in all city operations, and stabilize long-term city finances. So in some cases, the mayor members of the council ranked order from one through six. In some cases, there were, in the next line, Alderman Fisk gave four, so we chose to put an X in the box, just to indicate that there was no selection there. I know at the bottom, for example, of the screen there, Alderman Sufferton had one selection, so that we assumed was number one, and then the rest were blank, and then the rest of the council threw that. So I don't want to read everyone's rankings, you're able to see that on your own. We've also included any narrative that was provided by members of the council, so starting on page three of your packet, you'll see some comments on narrative from various members of the council, and that goes through to page four. And then beginning on page five, the staff prepared a document that looked at what some measurable objectives might be if, for example, the current goals were retained. So this was provided really for your information, perhaps to spark some additional discussion on the council. So pages five through eight are those measurable results. It's my recommendation, as we look at city council goals, that we try to focus, we go back into the first document. The idea of having those overarching goals, I think is a good idea, but I also think it's a good idea to have under each of those goals, either subgoals and measurable objectives, or certainly just the measurable objectives. And then a few weeks back, we did provide to you a document from the city of Santa Monica, California, which, in talking with members of the council, and again, even after we shared the document the first time, I think the framework that they have, I think, is something that perhaps may meet our needs in some form. So again, we have that document available again this evening. So Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, that's really the only preliminaries that we have. Jim Hurley, the management analyst in the Development Department, has taken a lead role in the Star Communities Program that we've worked on, so he is, along with Caitlin Slayken and Chandler Gallagher, have Johanna Leonard, are kind of our internal group of staff that have been looking at performance measurement, measurable objectives. So they're here tonight to provide whatever technical assistance they may have, but Jim is the scribe this evening, and will be, as you work through this, we need to put something up on the board, so to speak, we have a Word document we can use for that.
Great. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Wally. I have a couple, first a comment and then a question for you. So the reason, and I don't know, I haven't spoken to Alderman Sufferton or Alderman Wilson about their uses of Xs, but my feeling was that I put Xs in those boxes that I thought were important, but were clearly already in the pipeline and stated moving along, the council head is devoting a lot of time and energy to them. But I thought that there were new goals that I personally would have liked to have considered, rather than just working on our goals from our established goals. So that's why I put the Xs in, so I'd like to hear from Alderman Sufferton and Wilson about why they use them. So on that basis, I went in and I took all the data, because my tail starts wagging when it comes to doing these things. And it actually came out pretty well. I talked to Susie about it today, and in the summary, the prioritization of the council goals was actually turned out, even if we applied sixes to all of the Xs as the bottom rank, they still came out pretty much the way that Susie had prioritized them, with the exception of, I think, three and four were flipped, but otherwise, I thought it worked out pretty well. So some comments that I made about goals were included on page four.
And Alderman Fisk, if I may, just before you move on, my understanding is that Alderman Wilson and Alderman Sufferton provided the one goal only, and that the Xs were put in there by staff, not by the alderman, just to denote there were no other entries.
And I can log it on.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
And I'm happy to.
Yeah, and I'm not, and I would just like to hear that, because I think it's informative in terms of how things are prioritized, but after I did at least my research, it doesn't affect at all that much.
And then one second point, if I may. The council only asked for this as preliminary information. There had been no previous discussion that the council would agree to the current set of goals. It was merely meant to, again, provide some basis for discussion.
Right, and all of that is good, and I actually think that it's wonderful that we're talking about this. And in my own view of where we're at, is we're in a place now, historically, where we're really sinking outside the box, where we're, this is a sort of transformational point in our history that personally I haven't seen since about the 1920s. But it's exciting, it's challenging, and I go back to one point that you made a few weeks ago, Wally, and that is balance. And I think, as all of these things work together, I mean, you can't separate economic development from affordable housing, from job creation, from, you know, relations within the community and police, and all of these things work together, and it's how we balance them, I think, is going to be our challenge moving forward. So it's something that is, again, it's complicated, but it's well worth doing. What I want to be careful of is, I need to hear from you about how you use these goals on an everyday basis, because these should inform you of how much time you spend each day on fulfilling the goals. I mean, we see them down by the elevator, you know, we're thinking about them all the time, but these are important, so I need to hear from you about how you use them and how our decision, because, you know, looking at it, it's like, oh, fine, these are the goals, let's use them for 2019 and 2020, but it's more important than that, hasn't it?
Sure. Well, again, I've been with the city of Evanston now, this is going on 10 years, and there was not a regular goal-setting process in place when I arrived. There was a strategic plan that the city council completed in 2006, and so that was meant to be a five-year plan to take the council and the community to 2011. The idea of goals, I think, in Evanston over the last several years has been to, you know, have particular issues that were highlighted. There were no objectives attached to them, so there were no ways to really measure them. And I felt coming from a place where the council did not have a current strategic plan, and not have any goals, really the goals allowed me, as the city manager, to develop objectives with the staff to work and move forward. And then you mentioned how we have posted them at all the various work sites. I think that's a very key element, because it's allowed me, as I meet with the staff, to say, here are the areas that are most concerned to the council, and then talk with the staff about what they may be working on, affordable housing, so that's a piece of that puzzle. But we're all responsible for financial management, we're all responsible for community development in the most broadest of terms, police-community relations, talking with the police department. All those pieces then connect up to what we do. As far as how it guides my work on a day-to-day basis, it's been difficult without specific measurable objectives from the council. So I have worked with the various departments, have put together work plans with them, so that when I come and report to the council annually, I've selected what I think makes sense. And I'm here this year saying, while I think that's not been a bad thing in the past, it would be more effective to have the council identify some measurable objectives, leave the goals broad, whatever categories you'd like, but let's come up with some measurable objectives that then not only can we share the broad goals with the council, but then there's the measurable objectives that we all, the staff can be measured on and actually accomplish.
Well, my last question relating to that is, then how does the staff work together? How does our housing staff work with, I mean, how will all these pieces come together, so that you don't just have a fragmented approach to meeting goals?
Sure, well, then that's.
So where's the balance?
Then that's my responsibility to put together the appropriate teams of staff to work on those issues. So depending on what the goals are, you know, some of the current goals this year, for example, ensure equity in all city operations, well, obviously, that's a very broad goal. The further police-community relations initiatives has been a more narrowly-defined goal. We've had the citizen committee, Ms. Richardson was staff for most of last year, the programs are within the police department. So it's been left up to me to do that, and my sense is the council has been satisfied with that. I think, though, as we look at transparency, as we look at being responsive, you know, having more defined objectives, having more defined, you know, measurable results to measure our progress on, makes more sense. So my hope is, this is an iterative process, if the council this evening can focus on what those goals might be, try to give some initial feedback, if there's subheadings underneath there, or what things you'd like to measure, then let us go back as staff, and do some additional legwork, and then come back to you with some more information for you. I think that will then get us to a document that is something we can share with the staff of the larger community, but is also measurable, so that the council can look back at intervals of time to say, are we moving forward? As the community, as the city government, moving forward to accomplish those things.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to call myself, since you answered a couple of questions. So the city manager identified the idea that I didn't put in an X, but what I did do is I identified two items that I felt, not necessarily were the top priority, I characterized them that way, because that's how the question was posed, but I felt that stabilizing the long-term finances and investing in the infrastructure facilities are, in my mind, prerequisites to the other things that we do. So I put those as sort of the threshold priorities. And we've had goal-setting sessions in the past, and as those of you who have been here for a while recall, I'm generally resistant to ranking on a number basis, and I understand the value and purpose in doing that, but it's just a personal reluctance to say, okay, that, you know, equity is more or less important than affordable housing, or just doing that at all. So that's why I chose to do it that way. As far as, you know, the prioritization generally, putting this on a priority list doesn't, in my mind, doesn't mean that we're not doing it. For example, we've made very, very substantial long-term investments, and we're in the process of putting that on infrastructure facilities, with a lot of fantastic progress. But I think, you know, we have to kind of continue to track that and look at it with a longer-term vision. I think our staff does a really good job in setting out those longer-term capital needs, so I want to see that continue. One of the things that I think maybe we might want to entertain doing is, with regard to the finances, is doing some historical analysis, for example, property tax revenues. When we were doing the budget process this year, we kind of touched on some of these things on, you know, how much did we get before? But as far as the actual dollars in the door, looking at the historical cash flow from these sources of revenue, and then kind of projecting them out on a, you know, not a couple, few-year basis, but a really long, long-term basis, we have to tie these into the pension obligations. So the pension obligation, when I explain it to friends and neighbors, I just kind of say, okay, what you have to do is what we've been doing, put in a little bit extra every year, and put your head down, and in 50, 60 years, you'll be there. It's a little hard to wrap your brain around that idea, but if the government and the operation is going to sustain itself on a long-term basis, we really kind of have to wrap our brains around the idea of changing the way we do things. We negotiate contracts, we make, you know, make these decisions that impact those things, and each time we kind of have to, you know, up that a little bit, I cringe, because I'm like, okay, my great-grandkid is going to have to, you know, close something now, but, you know, it might not be tomorrow, and it might not be in 10 or 15 years, but I want to try to do the best we can to project out on a really long-term basis. It sounds a little bit silly, but when we get, I get a tax bill, and I think to myself, okay, my tax bill went up this much, it went up, you know, the past decade more, I think, than our revenue stream has gone up. So I'm confused by that, and, you know, I haven't done the math on it, but if we could kind of look at some of those historical trends, I think it will enable us to better advocate with the other taxing bodies, and also advocate with the state. The state controls things like the pension policy. So if we need to really get other communities together and make more of a concerted effort on expenses and how the revenues get to us, it's better to know what that looks like and be able to make a more informed, you know, legislative lobbying effort to accomplish that. So that's a lot of words for that whole, like, stability thing, but, you know, to your point, yeah, these are kind of short-term goals, but really, like, as far as the finance stuff goes, really start thinking about how are we going to make this sustainable? You know, climate change, we're looking at ways to make a, you know, 50-year difference in climate change, but, you know, let's start thinking about that. Alderman Rainey?
One of the things we could do is we could show examples of having done that. We're always being beat up by our citizenry about bonding, and we're talking now about doing long-term financing. In the early '80s, we said to those of us who are around then, and some of you who were not born then, we made a decision to deal with our sewers. And we said to the community, we are going to bond through the Illinois EPA, low-interest loans, 220, can you imagine saying to people today, we are going to bond over time for $223 million, and we're going to add this to your sewer bill, sewer tax? And what we're going to do is, we're going to fix your problem of flooding basements, backed-up sewers, and, you know, we're going to have community meetings all over town. you know, we're gonna have community meetings all over town, and we're gonna do this. And people said, we're gonna die, we're gonna, you're gonna kill us, everybody is gonna move out of town, and there's gonna be no way this town can possibly do it, because our staff is too stupid to pull this off, we don't have the quality people in our sewer department, we don't have the wherewithal, there's no way we can bond for this. Guess what? We did it. We finished paying off the bonds, I believe, have we not? We had finished paying off the bonds. And as a matter of fact, last year, I think we started switching over from, we reduced the sewer tax, and added, we told you we had reduced the sewer tax, we just didn't mention we were gonna add it on to the water to neutralize it. But we did it, we did it. And that's what we're talking about now. We're talking about doing those kinds of things, long-range planning to accomplish long-range goals. And we did it, and it's, it can be done. And we can do it with pensions, we can do it with other infrastructure, and sewers aren't infrastructure, I don't know what is. And the number of backups we have today are infinitesimal compared to what we had before. And that's, that's how we did it. We just, and the reason we did it, if you go back and you look at the press, we accused our foremothers and fathers of being too timid to do it. It should have been done years ago than when we did it in the early 80s. So, I mean, we have an example that it can be done.
Right. And you don't want to be the town that has the Lake Shore Drive Bridge, or, you know, has the death of the sewers.
Or Skokie. Just take a ride down Skokie when they had, in the spring, when they have a lot of rain and the sewers, all their carpet is, is on the pathways. I mean, that's, that's why.
And I think if we, you know, we continue on this path of rethinking how things could be done. The Crown project, for example, has a maintenance fund that's going to be independent of money that's kept by the city. So, you know, if the state of Illinois allows people to raid funds, it's a whole different conversation. But that's something to actually allocate money for the specific purpose. So there's a way to maintain the asset that's provided for from the actual revenue generated by the asset.
We do it in the carbon fund.
And we do it in the carbon fund, right. So to kind of keep thinking about ways to do that kind of thing, that it isn't going to cause the crisis on any given particular asset in the future.
Yeah. Can I just?
Yes.
I'm with you on trying to rank things, because to me, ranking these things, to some extent, is, I mean, they're all critical issues that, and I think I interpret some of this slightly differently than other folks. But to me, I agree with you, the two pillars are stabilize long-term city finances and invest in city infrastructure. And you can see, those were four and five on my list. So I think all of the other things are absolutely critical to me. I don't think any of these should come off our list, they all need to be there. So I do like having the framework quality where each of these has its own objectives. And, you know, if you asked me tomorrow, I might rank these slightly differently, just based on what my thinking is in the latest packet. So I think that these are all critical issues, and having the objectives that we can all see and measure is really, really very, very important. And, and my, my additional, I had added in online that, I know we discussed having the climate action, the CARP recommendations spread throughout, but I also think it is important for us to name it and say that, you know, this is something that we are continuously thinking about, even though it's, it's part of all of those. I do think that it should be even a standalone goal, because it's so important to
CARP should be a standalone goal?
I think it should, or something involving the climate action, but I also understand it needs to interweave with all of these. But I think it's, we can't not, we need to keep talking about preparing, 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 because it's coming, it's here, and it's already affecting us. The polar vortex, and then the super warm, I mean, that bridge, Lake Shore Drive, because of that temperature extreme. So we need to have ourselves prepared for this, and incorporate that constantly into every decision we make.
So maybe some, similar to what we're doing as far as track, tracking is the wrong word, including the impact of policy decisions, the equity impact, or lack thereof. So maybe it's have some different lines of environmental impact.
Right. I mean, if you think about, right, if you think about what's happening with our, you know, they, the prediction that we'll have more intense storms, we'll have these very big temperature swings, and how we pave our roads, and how we think about what is, what's the material that we use to pave our roads?
Right.
We probably can't continue to use the same materials we've been using for, given our temperature range. Our temperature range is changing. So those are all things that's part of the long-term planning. How do we maintain our infrastructure when our climate isn't what it's been? So that's the type of thinking that I think we need to do. That's all part of that CARP plan. There isn't a way to escape this. We need to start thinking and solving some of these problems, if we can.
Thank you. Alderman.
Just to add to that point, that we need to bring our workforce up to speed on being able to participate in these projects as they become available. So, again, that was a top priority for me, but especially for the CARP plan, we don't have the workforce right now to support the actions that are gonna be prioritized.
And in the community development job creation, there's a direct correlation to the affordable housing, because if you don't have the revenue from your job to pay for the housing, it's not affordable. So that's, that's really a super important component to that. So making sure that our, our community is prepared, and, you know, maybe taking the lead. We've got internationally renowned university with a lot of science and technology, and I know that they've been really working hard to, you know, enhance the collaborative efforts, but to really continue to pursue those. And then maybe even do more, you know, tracking and promotion of that to, to get the community, you know, even more aware, so that we can get better participation.
Sure. So with what everybody said, we're not going in this direction, obviously, but the reason I just chose one is I think the fewer goals we have, the more likely we are to achieve them. I think stabilizing long-term finance is the most measurable. I think that our other goals nest within that one more easily. I think if we were to, I've used this example before, it's like we're making New Year's resolutions sitting in a room that's on fire, and we're, be more organized, lose a little weight. It's like, contain the fire that's been coming in the room that you're sitting in. And that's the issue, it's not unique to Evanston, but I think if, when this council disbands, if we achieved some stabilization of long-term city finances, that's the most important thing that we can look back on as accomplishment. I think that while the other things are important, I would really like that to be number one in bold. And, you know, I, I think one goal is the way that I would do it, if I was setting it up unilaterally, but I'm not. But I think the residents of Evanston, it's not the most interesting or emotional, but it's the most important. So.
And Alderman.
So to back up, I would have preferred, again, I don't run the world, but a strategic plan, and I talked to the city manager about this when I got here, when I read the strategic plan, that was very old at that point. And I say that because, you know, we've had these goals last year, obviously, to a certain extent, we didn't accomplish them. I'm not even sure, I have some questions about how they were measured. But now we're talking about having these goals for another two years, which, you know, it's good or bad. But I think for me, what's lacking is, you know, we talked about that long-term planning for like the sewers and stuff, is for us to decide what our long-term goals are. So these are more long-term, because they're two years versus one year. But, you know, for us to leave, to give more direction to the city, and to the citizens, so they understand if we do go to some kind of bonding for whatever, that is meeting part of our long-term goal of getting us here in five years. If we did some kind of green jobs, training, now that maybe didn't look like it was as productive, they could see that our goal for five years is whatever in terms of green jobs. You know, I do appreciate giving me some objectives that are measurable, but I am concerned still, you know, where we see this connecting with our goals for the city. And obviously, that's gonna maybe change in a couple of years when, you know, whoever's sitting in these chairs. But I think it gives a little bit more confidence to the citizen base. To Alderman Fisk's point, you know, we have these, you know, kind of taped up, and they're nice and lofty. But if someone were to come and say, okay, well, what are we doing to ensure equity in all city operations? You know, I could give them kind of a fluff answer, maybe the city manager can give more, but I don't know if it's the kind of answer that is gonna instill confidence in people to say, oh, they're really working towards that goal. And so I would, again, we're not there, but I would have loved us to have more strategic plan, that we can then put some measurables in. In terms of these, you know, I ranked them because that kind of was the assignment. I, I think have more confidence with the furthering police and community relations being that we have a new chief. And so, again, if we were asked to, you know, this, that kind of, that would fall lower on my list today. The affordable housing, I do think we're getting there, and that's something that people can see is more tangible, with having those, you know, extra meetings just about affordable housing. I am very concerned about the finances, which I think probably we all are, based on how that was rated. And I don't know with our staff cuts and our budget issues, and just kind of low morale, and the citizen base being frustrated by a lot of things, true or not true, how much we can expand our staff to meet these goals, even over two years. So when I look at the measurements, I guess the suggested kind of measurements that you gave on the next sheet, you know, when I think about community development, I, you know, just me honestly, I'm not really that excited about tracking journey to work, and whether people are biking, walking, and transit. You know, I'm more concerned with our transit being accessible to everyone than I am, whether or not people are divvying, walking, biking, you know, however they're getting where they're going. I want our roads to be, you know, safe. I want us to have, everyone to have sidewalks that are accessible. So some of these things, I think, get us to a bigger, more long-term goal. I don't know that I would necessarily agree with some of the measurements given. And while I'm all about data and having measurements, I, what I didn't see here, and what I hope we would get to, is the qualitative measurement. So this talks a lot about the percentage, or the, you know, how many times we've done it, or a total of something. But I don't know what the qualitative measurement is. So if I say we put in five new sidewalks, were those sidewalks in places where we had a lot of pedestrian traffic, or they, you know, I know my ward has some streets where there are no sidewalks, but there's also not as many houses. So maybe we don't need to prioritize that. So when we get to the measurables, I would really like us to, either ourselves or have the staff, really dig deep to how those are impacting people's lives, and not just kind of a, we did this many things, or we did this many things. There were a couple of things on here that I think, you know, total number of affordable units, through the IHO, you know, obviously, that's something that we are continuously measuring. You know, number of resident ride-alongs. You know, some of this, I guess, to me, is not really important, for lack of a better term. I appreciate that we're starting somewhere. I do think the CARP, since we spent so much time with the citizen group, could be added. I guess I have mixed feelings about whether it's its own standalone goal, or if we just make sure those objectives, as they are broken down in the CARP, are, are throughout, you know, whatever goals we land on, because that is something that we committed to. And I know when I speak to some of my residents, some of people's frustration is they feel like we have all these subcommittees or a task force, and then kind of what happens to them, right? They're, they meet, they come, maybe give a report, and then it's kind of, poof, they're, they're off into somewhere else. And then my last thing, since it was mentioned, and I don't know if you're gonna weave into the goals, I continue to have concerns about star rating. I've recently looked at it after I was told that it merged, or changed, or did something. I would love for us to use some kind of rating. I don't know, I think last I looked, STAR had maybe 100, maybe less than 100 communities. And given as big as the US is, that signals a little bit to me, maybe STAR is not where we should be measuring ourselves against. I think if we could really collect some good information, then I don't care if we have a rating, you know, an outside rating agency, I'm happy to just communicate to our citizens, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, this is how much it costs, this is how it impacts your life. Whether we have a gold, or bronze, or whatever, STAR makes me no difference. And I think probably for some of the citizens, it makes them no difference. They really want to know how their tax dollars are being used to improve our city that improves their life.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Well, thank you for that. That's something to chew on. No, I thought it was really good. I absolutely am 100% behind CARP, I think. But I'm not sure I'm ready for it to be on the goals list yet. I think there, there's some work that's going on, and especially with costs that I think we need to share with the community, and weave into our budget as we're moving forward. And without that piece, I think I'm not, I'm not quite ready to do that. So maybe that would be something we could look to add after the conversation ends, maybe later this year, or maybe next year. So while I, I would like to know from you, I mean, since stabilizing the long-term city finances is the top goal, how do we do that? What does it mean? And how do we do that?
Well, I think, you know, there's a couple of things to look at. And Kate Lewis-Liken is here. Kate has now been promoted to our budget coordinator. So part of Kate's responsibilities is to, is to have a 12-month position that is looking at issues all the time. I think the longer-term financial planning for the general fund is important, and Kate and Hitesh and I are working on some documents that we would want to present to the city council as tools to look at that, for the council to react to as we move forward. I think there are the long-term infrastructure investments, long-term financial goals. I mean, we're looking at the general fund sort of as-is. If the council were to continue doing what it's doing today with known constraints, known obligations, how would we model that? So that's the first model we're looking at. I think the next piece of it, though, is what are unfunded needs? And there are many. There are, there are infrastructure issues, there are programmatic issues, there are pensions, capital debt. What are the council's goals to that? And then once you have those goals, how does that then fit in to the longer, to other long-range planning that we're doing? So my response would be that if the council feels that this is a goal you want to continue, we would come back with some suggestions on what some of those measurable outcomes would be to look at. If the council indicates some more specific objectives, saying that we want to fund our pensions at a certain level by a certain date, you know, that then drives financial planning. If they want to say that we want to reduce capital debt by X amount overall, what would that mean? So that's where those measurable objectives, if you set that goal, then we can come back and say, this is what it's gonna need, this is, you know, what, what the impact to the general fund is, what the impact would be to, you know, revenues that we would need to raise.
How likely is it in financial planning not to, to hold the line on property taxes? How realistic is that?
It's only as realistic as holding the line on expenses. So, so that's, that's the challenge. I mean, as we, we have done some preliminary work, just plugging in the debt obligations for Crown, you know, that already has an impact on our operations, and we're gonna have to look for ways to accommodate that. We, at this point, don't think that it's overwhelming, certainly, but it's, but it has an impact. And so we're going to have to, you know, make recommendations to the council right away, just looking at that. So, you know, one of the challenges, as you yourself said, Alderman Fisk, you know, the watchword for plant, long-range financial planning is balance. I mean, we are everything to everyone. We tried hard, I think, through this budget process to come to grips with that. I think we made some small progress. The reality is, is that for the services we provide, for the debt that we have, for the pension obligations that we have, you know, having sufficient revenues to meet those obligations is going to be a challenge for the, for the foreseeable future. Then you put in place what will happen in Springfield. Governor Pritzker is only beginning to come to grips, I think, with what it means for the state, and then what changes will the state make that will have impacts on the city. So I certainly think it's an important goal to have. I think I'm looking for the council's direction on what the parameters are, and that will then help us understand. I mean, certainly knowing we needed a full-time position. then help us understand, I mean, certainly knowing we needed a full-time position that did nothing but look at the budget, do financial analysis for us, something we had incorporated in other positions previously. So we've made at least that first step. And so I know I have one capable, competent position, full-time, to assist the staff and the council to work on that. If there's more that you wanna do, then that informs additional resource allocations, because really, it's Tesh and Kate, that, that, that's your team. Alex Thorpe, who has a full plate of other things, comes in and helps do, helps us with revenue forecasting. But, so we've got one full-time position, I'm not even sure what we would allocate to Tesh's time, a, a small part of that, a small part of Alex's time, but if you wanna do more, then we would be challenged to find additional resources to help the council.
Can I just? Do you wanna follow up on that? No, I wanted to follow up on that. On the, on the side. You got, you. Just briefly, before I get into what I wanted to talk about, if our, if our portion of the tax bill were 10%, and the tax bill went up, we would be blamed for high taxes. I mean, people cannot look at their tax bill and not see the city of Evanston as the tax bill. And it's just a longstanding problem. When did you last hear, when you were talking to somebody about your tax, the tax bill, that it really was District 65, or it was 202? It's always just the city. And it's, it's...
I'm gonna throw out an editorial comment. I watched the 65 approval of their budget.
It was a sleeper, wasn't it?
I don't think they had any public speakers, and I think it took about 16 seconds. So it's, it's, your, your point is very well taken, as far as...
So when I look at the goals, I can do research and understand all of them, except for one, one of the goals, and that is the workforce development goal. And I have absolutely no way of evaluating that goal. And I am wondering, since it is such a topic of conversation, no matter where you go, I'm always meeting somebody who was on the mayor's committee, oh, you must sit down and talk with us, you wanna talk with you about it, fine, let's do it. But I can't get my hands on what, what, what's the product from Kevin Brown's program, Summer Youth Program? What, what are we producing? What is the evaluative information coming out of that? Where can I look for that? Where can I see that?
You know, again, I, I would agree that the work that we're doing in our Youth and Young Adult program is really outstanding. I think one of our challenges is the quantitative results. There's lots of outstanding anecdotal information. One of the charges that Kimberly Richardson has over the next few months is really to help answer that question, because we provide assistance through other community development programs, we provide assistance at the library, to help people with job readiness. We don't have a, a good, complete answer to that question. And as we look at how we provide human services more broadly, we wanna make sure that we can, with the existing programs that we have, measure them, but to the point that Alderman Fleming made, is that I think there are gaps that we do very well, or certainly make excellent efforts amongst certain of Evanston residents, but there are those, certainly those that are older, 25 and above, that we don't have as, as a piece of a plan. Ms. Richardson's sitting right behind you, I don't know, Kimberly, if you wanna add anything to your initial observations of that. If you do, I'd ask you to stand up so that you can be heard, but...
Sure.
But it's, it's really been a central, the question's absolutely right on, Alderman Rainey, that we don't have the data that we need. Kimberly?
Yeah, so in the context of social services, and looking at the different programs that we provide and services that we provide, which includes workforce development, and our general assistance, and, and other programs that look at the well-being of our community members, what we find is that we have data, some of it's quantitative, some of it's qualitative, but we just don't have a really good way of gathering that information and being able to then create measurements for us to hold ourselves accountable and to make sure we're making impactful decisions that we're seeing result in the community. And so the reason for the framework in which we're working in is to develop those measurements that come out with indicators, so that we're able to say, here's the issues that we're trying to address in the community, based on the education, income gaps, areas where we see health, even looking at health data, because that is a part of that conversation, to say, this is where we wanna focus on now, how do our programs meet those indicators, if they do, and then we'll look at performance. So, and some of the questions that you're asking, we will be seeing those results within this review. However, it doesn't cover all of our city services, it's just very focused on the social service aspect of it. But I think it will be a really, a good test case of seeing how we can collectively, internally look at ourselves in a way to be able to then begin to show accountability and measurements that we haven't done in the past, that is being created by actual, real-time data. It's always evolving, it's never static, and I think that's something we have to realize, is that looking at it from an equity standpoint as well, it's constantly changing, it shouldn't always be the same measurements every year and year out. So that's something that we'll be evaluating throughout this process as well.
I can say, I was an intern very long ago, and I did the annual report for the Youth and Young Adult program, where it was, you know, 85 kids came to a job there, 25 kids went to, what's the youth job center over on Third Street? You know, so there was, there were some numbers, and the ages, and, and all that, and, you know, that's part of why I'm always asking about general assistance numbers, because I hear one thing in the community, and so then I have to ask Evon, can you give me the actual tangible numbers of, you know, what's actually happening? So maybe, and, and I know I've had some questions about the mayor's elevated Evanston, because people with the community will say, how come you didn't come to the committee meeting? And I was like, well, what committee, you know, I'm not on the committee, I don't know there's, what's happening. So maybe we need, as a council, regardless of our goals, some kind of report from Neil Gambo, and Kevin Brown, to just see, and we have Sharon Johnson, who I know, you know, I know a couple of people in my neighborhood that worked with her, gotten apprenticeships and stuff, so maybe we just need, from those three areas, a, a report, because I don't know what the mayor's doing, I just assume it's kind of the mayor's sidebar thing.
Well, 100-plus thousand, hopefully.
Well, no, but that was before he had the, right, when people ask me about it, they assume that I'm on the committee and know what's happening.
Let me, let me finish with my thing. So I've chaired the TV committee for 100 years, and one of the things we pounded away on was evaluation information. And, you know, you're not gonna get our money unless you can prove you've been doing your job. And Youth Job Center was, has always been a recipient. They, they can tell you, and I don't see any reason in recreating the wheel, reinventing the wheel, how many people they interview, how many people they counsel, how many people got jobs, and how long they stayed at the job, because they asked them to report back, and they keep in touch with, with employers. It doesn't seem like brain science surgery to me. And so I'm just wondering, do, we don't keep that information? Or is, are our programs not employment-type programs? Are they not training and employment? We call them workforce development. Are we not developing people for the workforce? Maybe I'm misunderstanding the purpose.
And I think it's a mixed bag. And I think, as Alderman Fleming says, yes, we do collect data from our Youth and Young Adult program. Is it comparable data to what the Youth Job Center collects? I don't think so.
All right, well, could you...
And I think that, as Ms. Richardson said, is one of our struggles, is that we need to keep comprehensive data. If we're working on workforce development issues, every partner, either the city's staff, contracted nonprofits, other partners, we need to be keeping the same stats, so we have apples-to-apples comparison. It's not, I think, as Kimberly said many times, it's not that we don't have data, it's just that we don't have data that we can use in an effective way to make these kind of decisions.
All right, so I'm going to stop bragging about these programs until I get some information. So can we find out, I guess by looking at the budget again, I can refresh my memory as to exactly what we're spending, and then we can, I can follow up with how many people we're helping.
Sure. And again, that kind, I don't wanna leave the impression that the work that our Youth and Young Adult Division does has no data, that's not correct. But is it the same type of data that we get from the Youth Job Center? I think Kimberly's initial investigation is that it's not. And so one of the things we are deciding, again, separate from the council's goals, is that we need to have similar data across the board for the council and the community to understand how the money is being spent.
What's the purpose?
And what, and that, so that is happening regardless of your discussions here this evening, because we feel that that's just good business to have that data that's comparable.
But we're, we're rating it as one of our goals, so we need to know what the purpose is. What is the goal?
Sure. And I think, and I think we have been able to provide the council over, over an extended period of time, a, a list of programs. I think what you're all saying is, that's all fine and well, but the threshold is higher, the bar is higher now, we need to know how that money is spent, we need to know it in a way that is meaningful. And that we are committed to do, because again, from a staff's perspective, we think we need to do that. And it's what other communities are doing, what other organizations are doing, what we have held other organizations who give money from us to that standard, why should we not hold ourselves to that similar standard in the services we provide by the city staff?
Thank you.
Alderman.
Well, this is a, a simple aside on this. When Cradle to Career had its formation meetings, I don't know who else was there, but one of the things that they discovered was that every, of one of those organizations was, everybody had data, everybody had data, but it didn't, it didn't talk to each other, it didn't mesh. And so one of the first things that the Cradle to Career did that first year was develop forms of data, so that they could actually compare what each group, each organization was doing, and figure out, is there a gap? Or actually, are we doing, are we meeting, are we overlapping unnecessarily? So, and that was one of the problems, was that, and then I, I think that that has been solved since then. But that was the fundamental thing, it's like, we're all measuring different things, they might actually be the same, we're all measuring, but our data doesn't make sense. But I just wanna loop back to some, I think, a very good point that you were making, Alderman Fleming, which is, and, you know, and this might be, I don't wanna derail this, but I really like the idea of, you know, strategic plans are hard to come up with. I mean, I've been on two different strategic plan periods when, here on the council, and they're hard for organizations to do. But I, I like the idea of saying, where do we want Evanston to be five years from now? What should Evanston be looking like 10 years from now? Something like what you were describing, which is, I mean, we have these immediate goals, and we should have them to help us shape our day-to-day operation, but I really like the, the idea of, what do we, and I can't, and the other communities must do this, what, like Evanston 2025, Evanston 2030, Evanston 2035? And say, you know, this is, this is where we'd like to land, and then, and let people know in the community, as we were saying, you know, we're investing and investing, and we may not be there in this 24-month period of time, but we expect that we will be there in five years. This is why we're doing this now, so that we can do it, we can be here five years from now. Our long-range sewer plan, that was...
Looking back.
Twenty, but it was 20 years.
Yeah.
Right. You know, we are investing these dollars now because 20 years from now, whoever's living in your house won't get, won't have a flooded basement, or when you go to sell your house, you can assure them their basement won't. But it's that type of, I think that, that's a very, a valuable exercise for us to do. So it helps, you know, with the, and with community input, I know I'm adding a whole nother layer here, but, you know, it's, I think that's some of what the concern is from the residents that we talk to, is, you know, where are we going? And I think that's, that, a sense of what, what's our vision for what we should be in the future. I don't know how we, whether that's a, I don't wanna go through another strategic planning process, but, you know, is it setting five goals, you know, or four goals for a five-year time period, and a 10-year time period? Or, you know, very broad, but something that we can look at and say, we're gonna shoot for that, and here's how we're gonna get there.
I think things like census projections, there will be more people in the country, there will be more people in the city, and to kind of, you know, again, long-term plan that infrastructure to, to meet the needs of how many people are likely gonna be living here. That's just one example, so I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Alderman.
I'll try to go back and remember. So I think that CARP and equity really overlay into the goals that we have listed here, with the exception of the police community relation initiatives, maybe not CARP, but every place else, CARP is relevant on the plan that I'm familiar with. And especially in the workforce development piece and the affordable housing with sustainable building practices, which also ties back to affordable housing and, and, and job creation and workforce development. But to Alderman Rainey's point, like, it, this, I don't think it should be this complicated. Like, we have a goal, and I think that we should set a measurement, and I think I see measurements here, giving some examples of measuring the percentages of unemployment, where we started and where we're at. I would add to it, average household income, paying special attention to our low-income census tax. And that's how we see, is what is, is this workforce development that we're celebrating, is it really accomplishing what we want it to accomplish? Is a summer youth job program attaching the youth to job opportunities beyond the summer? Is it introducing them to a career path that they might wanna explore if they are not going to college? Like, we could just, I know when I set goals for the ward, economic development for me means I wanna attract five businesses that brings 100 jobs, and, you know, 10 of them are a management-level career-type jobs, and so they're very specific, and then I can measure it. I want 10 new minority or moderate-income homeowners in the ward. Like, if we can have those kind of specific measurements, then we can look at the programs that we're funding, the services that we provide here at the city, and see if they're working, if they need to be tweaked, if they need to be eliminated, if they're underfunded and under-resourced. That's what I'm hoping that we can do, because we are having this really abstract conversation, and we really need to get to, like, more income in the households of families that need it. We need to have a workforce that can do the jobs that we're looking to attract, which is infrastructure work, which is affordable housing development. Right now, if we don't have a workforce that doesn't have the, the acumen and the credentials to do this work, then we're not talking about anything that's gonna support the folks that we say we're concerned about. So it, it, it all has to be discussed, but I feel like, I, I don't, I don't understand the direction that the conversation's going. I get the data is necessary, between 100 nonprofits in town, somebody has it. Like, I don't agree with investing in hundreds of thousands of dollars to do more data research. Like, we have the data, Kimberly's working on a plan, the nonprofit community is working on a plan, Cradle to Career is working on it. We need to do the work and get the people the support that they need. And, and we've identified it here on this goal list, and why don't we just decide on what this means to us? Expand affordable housing. For me, that means, we still don't know how many units short are we, or are we short? That was brought up before.
Not short.
Okay, we're not short?
No.
So what does this mean? Why are we talking about it? So if, if we're not short on affordable housing, then we're short on living wage jobs, right? That's where we're short. So let's stop talking about building another 10,000 units of affordable housing, and the issue is that the people here can't afford the housing stock that's here. So now we build more houses for folks outside of Evanston to come here and get access to this, this housing stock that's not for them. We have on our minds the residents that live here right now and can't afford to stay. And so we're gonna be sending them to Gurnee, or where, Des Plaines, or wherever they're going.
Alderman Simmons, all I wanna know is, are we creating jo, are we helping people get jobs? That's the only question I'm trying to get into. I, I don't wanna do any, any new research, I don't wanna hire anybody, I just wanna know...
I'm agreeing.
Are we producing any jo, are we producing any opportunities for people to get jobs? That's all I'm asking.
And I don't, I don't know that we are, because if we have the summer youth job program, which is great, and our chil, we have six to 800, 1,000 kids that are working in the summer, what are they doing after the summer months? What are they doing when they graduate high school? I hear the high school has these high graduation rates, and everybody is college-bound, it's not happening. The kids are not all going to college, and they're going a semester, and they're coming back home. And I'm talking from personal experience. So how are we measuring that? I mean, I don't know.
That's what I, that was what I was asking.
So I'm, I'm, I'm seconding what you're asking. And I'm saying that, why don't we get to, like, some real work, is what I'm saying.
Can I, can I say why, why I brought that up? I brought that up because someone is running for the Oakton Community College Board, who is bashing the city of Evanston for doing nothing. With all, with all their, with all their committees and boards and mayor's committee, they're bashing it, and the reason they're running for the board at Oakton is because they're doing so much at Oakton Community College. And I, I, you know, I challenged them, and then I went, duh, 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 duh. We're better than them.
So are we agreeing to keep all five of these? I do, I do, you know, I, I struggle with the equity work. I, I love the equity work, but I struggle because I don't know what we've done with it. And I hate to keep it as a goal if we're lollygagging for lack of a term. So I'm happy to incorporate that and CARP throughout all, because it should, if we're saying equity in operations, if we keep these other one, two, three, four, whatever those are.
I'll fix that one.
That is operations, so. So it is in operations if we say, you know, if one of the objectives for each goal includes an, an equity in the CARP, you know, filter, however we want to call it.
Or a goal.
A goal, objective, measurable, but something measurable, because I think that is an issue that we have these lofty things, let's be the best city in America. Well, what is, what is that?
Most local?
Alderman.
Um, so, a number of minutes ago, we were focusing on how important it is to stabilize our long-term city finances, and, um, it seems to me the other thing that we need to be sort of, has to be sort of hand-in-hand with that, because the, the, one way to stabilize long-term city finances is to cut, 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 cut expenses, or to enhance community development, job creation citywide, so that we can, you know, um, help our residents have more income, help our, um, local businesses thrive, and, and do things that are going to sort of help on the, on the revenue and the income side, so that together, the two of them put us in a stronger, um, financial position. And so I just, when I look at the, um, sort of measurements, met, under the enhanced community development and job creation citywide, I don't see a lot of there that's really meaningful in terms of the enhancing community development. We've talked a lot about what we can do about job, workforce training, but, but not job creation and community development. So I, somehow I'd like us to think more about some of that.
Mr. Mayor Prokhem, you know, Johanna Leonard, our community development director, has spent a lot of time on those. Perhaps if you could let her speak for a few minutes about, you know, the, the measures that we've been looking at, and this provide feedback, because if there's anything among what she says you think is more on point than something else, I think that would help us react at a future meeting. And Johanna?
Good evening, Johanna Leonard, community development director. So in terms of-
And also speak, um, project to the microphone.
So in terms of community development, I think that's a, you know, it's a, it's a tough term, because it's a general term. It, it's a bucket that holds a lot of things, and a lot of the goals that have been included could be considered community development, because we're developing communities. So in terms of the metrics of measurement, I think to Alderman Fleming's point, how many people take transit, how, but is transit accessible? Is, those are sort of two pieces. One, one maybe skews a little more on the qualitative side, one skews on the quantitative side, but it's also bundled with, if somebody can't get to their job, that's a barrier to their entry to the workforce. So when we talk about workforce development and participation, we need to think about how those barriers and those pieces of community development affect one's ability to do the another. And, and I think when we've talked about how we look at our board committee and commission work and combining those things, so we're not so siloed in different, um, practice areas, economic development, um, environment board, utilities commission, we think about bringing all those pieces together. In terms of some of the ways that we've thought about measuring those different areas, uh, the, the number of affordable housing units created, but also then the quality of affordable housing units created, um, in, looking at how many people who were living in Evanston previous to being housed in an affordable housing unit, where they came from, how long they were able to stay, are they, are they moving from an affordable unit to a, a different path to homeownership, longer-term rental, it, all those things, and that, that takes a little bit more, um, relationship with partners and others, but I, I think we really, particularly with, with moving away from STAR to LEED and to maybe even our own system, how do we, how do we take all those pieces together and, and recognize that they interplay with each other? Because you can't just talk about workforce development without talking about transportation. We don't talk about childcare as it relates to workforce development, because that's often a very, very massive barrier to entry. You can't, you can't have stable housing. If you don't have stable housing, you may not be able to pull down a job. So it's, all these things, we can't just talk about them separately, but we need to be able to measure the quality of our impact and how we're moving that sustainability, livability needle forward, and not just count participants and, and the total number quantified.
One of the things that I've spent a lot of time, both thinking about and talking with staff about, um, and is, who's, who's interested, what businesses are interested in relocating to Evanston? And what are the barriers to their coming? Because that's, uh, businesses that come here have jobs, and we've certainly lost our industrial base. So what is going to replace that? And that's one of the reasons why, um, Paul Zalmasak, to me, has been, good conversations with him have helped. It's, it's like, what, what is your direct experience talking to companies that want to come here, and why aren't they coming, coming here, and what can we do to bring them here? Because when they come here, they bring jobs with them. And so is it, is it childcare? Is it transportation? What, what is it? Is it the lack of enough office space? What is it? And, um, and I think, obviously, we're making some good progress on that. But we've been, we've been not studying this. We've been dealing with it piecemeal. With the location of, and I don't remember the name of the childcare center downtown.
Bright Rising.
Yes. I mean, they're full. They serve Northwestern University. They're, they're full. They're in the middle of downtown. It's important to have them there. And that will be a benefit to new office workers that we have coming in. With every, and Alderman Russinens can, I'm sure, speak to this more intelligently than I can, but with, with every new, sort of, group of jobs that comes in are different categories of jobs, different levels of jobs. And it's all those people that are coming in that are important. And, and without that, and again, while I'm sorry to keep going to balance again, but balance is just really the key to all of this. I mean, how, how do we keep, for example, a business that wants to come to Evanston, but only wants to be in the central business district, only wants to be downtown, doesn't want to go to Main Street or Dempster, it's too far, it's too far from university, it's too, you know, too far from transportation, wherever, whatever their objections are, they're going to choose to go somewhere else. I mean, we're, we're really limited in what, with some, with some business attraction. And what do we do to encourage folks to come to Evanston? We don't have very much room. I mean, when you look at our, well, when you look at, and I, believe me, I have tried to get folks to come, even at A31 Emerson, I was trying to get an office building over there, and it was a little, you know, it was a block too far away from whatever. Yeah. And, um, but it's helpful to hear from staff, and especially staff that have the day-to-day contacts with, and have the feedback that I don't think we hear enough about. So it, it puts us at a disadvantage, and then we're kind of-
Sure.
-juggling, juggling things.
And I, and I think, and Johanna can help with this. I think you've covered many of the issues. I mean, one of, one of the biggest issues is where do people go? The, the housing stock, or even the office vacancy rate is really at historic lows. Mr. Smith does a great job, I think, if it's not monthly, quarterly, you know, comparing that, and if you look and follow it, it has gotten tighter and tighter and tighter. And so one of the biggest hindrances is if a business is looking for so much office space, it's just not here. You know, the second issue is where are the employees of that business coming from? If they're coming from Chicago, how easily accessible are we? Many folks are using transit. The purple line is there, it's operating. Is, is it as accessible as other lines of the CTA? The answer is no. And so that is a hindrance. It takes longer for some people to get here who are living in Chicago than it would other parts of Chicago if you're just taking the red line or blue line, something like that. So that's another hindrance. But I think it's the space that's the biggest issue. Johanna, do you want to add anything?
Sure. And I was the city's economic development manager for a number of years before holding this position. I, I would add, I think people come to Evanston because they want to be in Evanston. They're not coming to Evanston because they've just decided they, poof, have to open up a shop and they stumbled upon Evanston. They make it, people make a conscious decision. They shop Evan, they, they shop Evanston as a place. I, I think there, we have older spaces, so it's, it's a little bit of, oh, this space doesn't quite fit my need, or the space is too big and, and is too expensive. And that's another piece of, we have, we have landlords that have an expectation of a, of a Starbucks or a, a level of a rent that smaller retailers aren't going to be able to pay. And that, that sometimes contributes to some of the vacancies or the challenges where people coming in. We also have situations where you have landlords that are, are out of state, and they have an expectation that, um, they only have one kind of tenant. I mean, I think of the Starbucks on, on Sherman, and how much work the previous downtown Evanston executive director worked with that landlord to explain that Starbucks coming to that location wasn't going to be the end of the world. Because she had it in her mind, she wanted absolutely no food users, and that would have been, and that, that would be a failed business. I mean, so many things, but, but we had somebody who handheld and, and worked through that to overcome that.
If, if, I'm sorry, Johanna, to interrupt you, and I don't want to take a whole lot of time with my comments on this, but, um, between Alderman Ravel and Alderman Wynn and I, we had a nice conversation with, um, one of-
It's Alderman's thing.
I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't sure, I wanted to say his name, to put out his permission. The, the smaller spaces, the traditional retail, ground-floor retail, is not the problem. I mean, the, what I'm sort of focused on are, are the bigger, the, the corporate employers, the folks that are going to come here and employ a wide variety of people and, and really establish, uh, really establish a selection of jobs that will support the smaller niche retail in the, in the rest of the downtown. But that's, that's what I'm thinking of, that we've lost so much business just because we didn't have the space. I know at one point, Peapod would have loved to have come back to Evanston, went to Skokie, they got a better deal in Skokie, and found the square footage they were looking for, and now they're downtown Chicago in a beautiful new space, made a really beautiful new space. But there, we've lost other, other folks that we have been incubating, businesses that we started in Evanston, then we incubated them, and then they grew to a point where we didn't have space for them and they left. So, and when we're talking about job creation and job retention and all of this, we have an opportunity here. And I want to make sure that we take advantage of that. And that's, that's what I would like to hear more about, if we can.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor Prokhem, part of our problem is our success, that, for example, Rotary International Building, we had ZS Consulting-
Right.
-a business that was born and bred here, that was in a building owned by the university. The university decided they needed all of the space. ZS was prepared to take, how many jobs, was it 200 at the time? 200 high-paying jobs out of Evanston. This city stepped in, worked very closely with Rotary International. Rotary International basically took their building and rearranged the building, so that existing tenants were moved, Rotary International's own employees moved around the building and made space so that ZS remained here, but it's filled up the building. And so now the Rotary International-
But we gave them out of money, too.
Well, what we, what we gave them, we gave them, we, we, we are remitting hotel taxes. They bring in people from all over the world, so the incentive with that was the remission of the hotel tax. But now the Rotary International Building is completely filled. It's under long-term leases, so those people are coming and going and supporting our downtown, which is absolutely what we want.
Exactly.
But the downside is, they ain't going anywhere. And so consequently, there's no new people to bring in the building, because the building is nearly 100% leased. The Chase Bank Building, very similar story, the 1007 Church Building, which was a zombie building for a number of years. Our economic development staff, Ms. Leonard and Mr. Zalmasak, worked really hard to help the property owner make that building available, and now that, it has long-term leaseholds.
Is that pretty full?
They are pretty full. So the, the Aruna Irish Dairy Board, you know, they moved into the entire space, so they hired more people to bring in more folks there. Again, all the people you want in your downtown are here. The problem is, we don't have any place to put other folks who would like to join them. And so hopefully, over time-
That would be a goal, and something we, that's, I mean, it's built into the goals that we're stating.
But I think it's important for the council to realize, just even in the last several years, it's because of your initiatives that have created the problem, because you have all the buildings that are full with exactly the kind of jobs you wanted there. They're here, and they're patronizing your downtown.
So maybe if we go down the library parking lot, we get some office space.
Huh.
Alderman Russinens.
No brainer. So, for example, we have folks that are unemployed and need jobs. We also have a downtown Evanston restaurant community that is, I'm hearing they're saying that they can't get qualified food service workers, managers, cooks, busters. Why aren't we figuring out how to attach the need to the workforce? And so, like, today, for example, I'm hoping it happened, I asked staff to meet with some experts in that space to figure out what kind of resource we can come up with to train the workforce, so that they can meet those jobs, so that the restaurants then can succeed. And then we don't have more vacancies, because they couldn't succeed, because they couldn't get the staff to work in the restaurants. I mean, even before we go out to find these businesses to move to Evanston for space that we don't currently have, why can't we look at the businesses that are in town, talk to them? Is there even a best practice for incentivizing local hiring with businesses? I'm sure there is, some way to maybe work with them on relaxed business fees or something along those lines?
Well, I think mo, most restaurants want to hire somebody locally. I mean, most businesses want to hire local people, because when we talk to businesses, they say, will you hire locally? And they're, they're saying, why wouldn't I hire locally? Because it's a short commute, there's less likelihood of them being stuck in bad weather, and all, all those things, access to transportation. I think there's other market challenges in place with things like the restaurant. There's access to better wages in restaurants further south in the city of Chicago, because of a number of things, the way tips work out, the way, if you are a certain caliber of a, of a restaurant employee, you can get a better access to different restaurants that have a higher bill at the end of the evening, which might mean a higher tip. So we have quite a few of those restaurants here in Evanston, but you, you want to sometimes be in Chicago, because you can get a bigger tip. So, and they, and the people live there, so there's a function of that. So, um, and one of the, the other pieces of, of all this, too, is trying to engage the people who need the help. So, um, you know, organizing, we can't just say, okay, restaurants, here's your workers. I mean, we need to understand what their need is and aggregate that. So if one restaurant says, I need workers, that's a harder thing to fill than if 10 restaurants say, I need workers, and here's what I need, and, and to self-organize. And that's, it sounds-
It's not that hard. So we have folks that need jobs. We have an outreach department that is working with people that, that need the jobs. The restaurant workers need the jobs. So you have staff, connect them to the services. We have a resident in town that has a program that will, um, train you to be a restaurant worker, get you the food handler's license and everything else. So why can't we do that? It's not that difficult. We, no one's hiding. Like, the folks that are unemployed are calling us, can you help us find a job?
We also have local colleges that we pay as a, that we pay as citizens who do-
And, and, and we have done, you know, I think it was 18 months ago, that we convened a group of local restaurateurs with downtown Evanston and Oakton Community College to do that. So the answer to your question is no, there are no barriers. It's a matter of focusing resources.
So can we pick four of those and not six?
Downtown Evanston apparently, that's what I'm hearing? I don't know.
We've got to find that out.
Well, I think, you know, one of, one of the questions to Alderman Russinens' point is that, um, I hear that people need qualified people or, you know, reliable people.
Chefs, like chefs, sushi chefs, that's okay.
No, even just, um, waitstaff, well-trained waitstaff.
I think we're getting down-
Yeah, yeah, we're getting that, kind of-
I mean, I think that could be a goal that goes under job creation and expansion and development, which is maybe the objective there. One of them could be, you know, as a city, maybe doing better coordination with our, you know, partners. So whether that's, you know, Oakdale, if they already have the training in place, you know, I know the high school has some culinary training.
Right, they do.
You know, that we maybe, if these places aren't already getting themselves together, maybe that's one of our objectives as a city, is to make those connections.
And some of it is providing transportation out to Oakdale, because that can be hard to get to at odd hours.
So I'm going to suggest we have four goals, and we overlay the equity and the carp into the four goals, and maybe get rid of the fifth, at least goal. And I just will say that because I feel more confident with that, even the changes that I'm starting to see now. You know, Alderman, who says, and I attended the deployment meeting, which was, for me, was very interesting, and I'd actually asked about going before and was not invited. So I feel like even those small things are going to make a difference, which maybe-
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Deployment meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I think that even these smaller things that I'm seeing are going to further that, it makes me more confident that we don't have to have that as a goal. I think Alderman's saying is right, the less goals we have, maybe the more likely we are to actually accomplish them. So if we, I would suggest that we have one through four as goals, and just put curve and equity throughout all of them as we see fit.
What would be one through four?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the list. So stabilize, long-term, enhance community development, affordable housing, and invest in infrastructure. And I'm not saying those are in a certain priority order, but those are just-
And, yeah, and I don't think there's, personally, I don't feel like there's a need to prioritize them. I think that they, it's clearly developed that they're all prioritized.
And if we go down to four, that helps, too.
Yeah. And Alderman, let me, I do agree with you. I think these other aspects can be rolled into components of the others. You know, one of the themes, just kind of listening to the conversation and thinking about it, clearly, we have a desire, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the group as a whole, I think we have a desire to take advantage of, you know, not necessarily go out and hire more people, but we've dedicated staff to looking at data and providing us with more analysis, to continue on that and to help us get feedback on the programs that we have. We've got goals, we've got a lot of programs, but it's sometimes hard for us to tell if that's effective or what changes we need to be making, or if we need to be doing it differently. A piece of data that I saw, and I've talked to a few of my colleagues about this, but this was interesting to me, I think it was New York Times, something along those lines, but it was data on a nationwide basis on whether or not you're more likely to, you know, be better off than your parents if you're from a low-income family or household. And it was broken down by demographics, racial demographics. And I think it was on a, maybe census block basis. So that was very interesting to me, because that's taking a lot of data over a period of time, and that can really, you know, I think that's the kind of thing, it's data that's available, but that can kind of, you know, we can look at that, somebody else has done the work, see, okay, wow, you know, we've been doing this and you can see positive trends in these areas, but we're really missing out on, you know, certain groups or certain blocks or certain areas. So, you know, having that staff that you've dedicated to these things, you know, kind of bring more of that kind of data to us, and, you know, enable us to develop the ideas and the policies that'll, I think, you know, further that. You know, we've got the goals, they're great, but I think what I'm really hearing is that we're all collectively ready to kind of like dig in and actually, you know, get the work done on achieving the goals.
So can we make some objectives for these goals? Is that the, no, let's not do that.
But I think, you know, C manager is-
So who's going to do it? And when is it going to happen?
And that's my frustration, I would just say, in fact, since you do a plan, which I'm not saying we need to go through, but I, I, here from my residence and I, as a citizen, felt like I elected people to make these choices. And I understand we do have staff who can bring back some things and help us flush them out, but I get concerned, and I spoke to city manager about this last year, that I feel like sometimes it's upside down, like the staff is giving us the goals, the staff is giving us objectives, and we're saying yes or no, maybe tweaking things. First is maybe people elected us to make the goals and make the, and lead the, kind of lead the staff versus the staff leading up. So I, you know.
But this is the kind of thing where we have homework, we go home and we work on this, we come back, this is a Saturday morning project, I think, where we need and we work on this.
And I think it's really, it lends itself more towards, you know, breaking them down. So, you know, if we took that workforce component and a bunch of important points from the group as a whole, if we get more, you know, more information, a lot of it's anecdotal, a lot of it's just what we hear. So if downtown Evanston can kind of give us some specifics, okay, what exactly do you need? And we have a lot of contact points and we have a lot of organizations that we work with, so we can reach out to them and have them provide us with the data.
But I think Alderman's saying, let's make a goal just for downtown Evanston, I think her-
No, 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 same, it's just one example of what-
But so when do we do this, then, I guess, just for my own careful thinking? Because now it's getting into March. We're making goals for, obviously, for the next two years, but we're, it's getting into March. We have many things that have been a little bit delayed. And so when do we think we're going to get this done so that we and staff and the citizens know which direction we're going?
But I think the point is that we're approaching this a little bit differently than we've approached it in the past. Where we are all making a commitment to digging down into these and really understanding them and making decisions on how best to achieve them. And that, I mean, that takes-
Right. And historically, what we've done is, we have the goals, and that's sort of the governing principles for the staff. Okay, I feel like that's kind of how it's played out.
But how do they know, or they don't know where they're at?
I think that's what we're looking at, changing the, I don't want to say change the model, you know, but change the way that we as a council approach that, honestly.
So, this is our responsibility to do this. I don't want another memo from staff with suggestions. So we're all professionals here, we can get this work done. We agreed to get it down to four goals, did we agree on that? And so I know for this exercise, with each one of the goals, I gave some further goals, some details on what we need to be doing. So if we could all do something similar to that and then come up with how do we measure whatever that goal is for affordable housing, I'm just now hearing we don't need any more affordable housing.
Well, I don't know that that's true. Sarah made that report based on a census number.
Okay, so, yeah, the thing, you know, if it's a question of, do we have the legal required amount? The answer to that might be yes. Do we have what we expect as a community, for our community standards, probably not.
Right, so, and given the income distribution we have in our community.
So we shouldn't be saying that. We, I mean, we're a unique city and we, we shouldn't be saying that. I mean, it's not fair to say that, and you have-
The beds are saying that, we're not saying-
That's not what I'm saying, Alderman, I'm saying that we haven't decided for our city. What is our standard? Is our standard what a data report says? No, it's not. We make our own standards, that's what makes us exceptional and livable.
I'm working on it, don't call me out.
No, no, I mean, I think, I think we all agree that that, you know, we've never accepted the mandated amount. I mean, I think we've met the mandated amount for a long time.
What I'm asking is, can we come up with, what does that mean? Does that mean finalizing and accessory dwelling, you know, policy change? Does that mean, you know, 400 more units of affordable housing at 50% or 30%? Like, can we come up with a, like, real and attainable number so that we can measure our success or not in our efforts and make adjustments accordingly? Like, can we do that as a council?
Well, and part of, we also have the Affordable Housing Planning Committee, which is only finally going to have its first meeting tomorrow.
Right, but we can't keep, and this is, we can't keep waiting for this, and that. I mean, I think that they add value, but we are the council.
Right.
So if we say X, Y, and Z, maybe they say, well, we did some research and we found it should be Z, Y, X, and we, but I think we are the council and we can set the tone and make, you know, we're not getting down to the nitty-gritty.
Sure, no, and-
But I think we need to give more direction than waiting for this task force and that task force. I mean, you know, stabilize long-term city finances, I imagine in a couple of months you guys will start on the budget. I mean, Kate's now on the budget every day. And so we can't, in my opinion, wait too long for these things because they're going to come back, staff is going to come back with this very blanket, oh, we've given them to stabilize long-term finances. They're going to come back with their best effort of a memo, and then probably will say, well, we don't like that, we want to keep this, the citizens are going to be up in arms about getting rid of this or that and the third. And we don't have a measurable of what that means for us, you know, have a tangible, we haven't given them the direction of a tangible. So I get for staff to start this budget process and they don't know where we want to go with this.
So back to the stabilized, stabilized long-term finances, if you could, and you probably know it, Wally, because you've been at municipal government for how many years?
A few.
Right. It was something, I remember hearing about a best practice in, like, tax management where it's like, it's held. What is that? I remember hearing about it at a budget conference.
I mean, holding a line on taxes, kind of thing? Well, I mean, I guess it's a policy decision. I mean, and again, it comes back with resources and expenditures. I mean, I presented the council budget that didn't raise property taxes, and I think that the community went through and looked at what other things were going to be needed and made the decision. I mean, there are all sorts of best practices, and we'd be happy to bring back to you any number of them. But I think ultimately it comes down to what you want to accomplish.
So I was going to suggest for the, so we've narrowed to four goals. I think Affordable Housing, when we actually already have, that is on a track. So we have a, we have a next meeting on a calendar. So I think we have that, you know, at least kind of in some sort of process. The other three, I was going to suggest that the, that the staff put each of those on a separate meeting so we can do one at a time as a special order for each one. But in advance of that, well, in advance, you know, solicit the input from the council board. So Alderman Simmons, like you said, for a lot of these things, you gave, you know, some very detailed specifics. So I think we could kind of all look to that and use that as kind of a guide on what we can provide to you in preparing the memo. So it's not-
Several of us do.
Well, yes, yes, yes. Vandy, she was making the point about it, but, yes. And I think that would be useful, so that way it's not, it's more council-driven and you're getting more feedback on what our expectations are and what our needs are. So we could do that, and the expectation would be that we would do that in advance over three different meetings, but as, you know, we can break those other three down and put them, you know, I think the finance one probably does tie in with the budget, so maybe that goes a little bit further out, but the other ones-
No, that should go first, so they know where they're going with the budget. Well, that's my thinking, it should go first.
We're not going to propose a early start. I met with the management team today and determined that we will go back to a regular timeframe. So I think that there's, you know, whatever order you choose, but we will not be coming to have budget discussions with you until summertime.
Well, and to, I agree with one of Alderman's upper points, and that is, you know, it sounds like it's overstating it, but the room's on fire. So, and in my opinion, local governments in this, in our country are not, it's not a good model. Now, we do the best we can within the constraints that we're given, so we have a lot of constraints, state, federal, community expectations, all of these things are a factor. But my personal goal is, I want to leave this job with everything in better order than when I got here. You know, I think we're on track and we're doing a good job, but there's a lot, a lot, a lot of work to do. And we don't have quite the trajectory we need to have. When I started in, you know, my cohort, the pension deficit amount that was on the books was a tiny fraction of the reality. So I think it's incumbent on us to accept reality. Reality's scary. It's really, it's going to be intimidating. You know, we balance the budget every year, but I think what we have to really do is start being honest with ourselves and the community. So, you know, people talk a lot about transparency. A lot of us, if not most of us, have participated in different, you know, National League of Cities, whatever that might be. We are so far above and beyond other communities in those regards. But I think that in some senses, it might just be too much information. You know, the budget process, you know, back to the schools, you know, they spend, you know, no time, and that's a big chunk of the budget, of the property tax bill. But, you know, let's, let's really kind of like double down and, you know, figure out ways, you know, we said in the beginning, we're a creative community, we're a leader in lots of different ways, so let's keep that going. But it's going to require work, it's going to require dedication, but I think we have that from this group. I think it's a really dedicated group of people and staff. And that might kind of like, you know, move it along to giving them some specific direction.
Right. Well, I think this has been a really good discussion, and I'm happy that we're all here and doing this, and I'm happy that the public is here and listening to this. But I, I think it's important, an important part, to realize that we need to be communicating what we're talking about to the larger public, and we need to, I'm almost thinking of a graph and how an impact, impact arrow is an analysis graph is helpful, just to kind of understand how complicated these things are, but how, how important they are to engage the community in the conversation in a positive way. It is not helpful for the community to get up and say, you people are terrible and you don't, you know, you're not listening to us and you're-
Everything's a mess.
Yeah, everything is a mess, absolutely, everything is a mess. It's, that may all be true. Okay, well, I mean, that may all be true, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't engage everyone, but let them know what our conversation is. And so to issue a, some sort of report or some document at the end of this and say, here's what we started here, are the goals, here's what they mean, affordable housing is a really good example of that. I mean, you know, the national standard is something like 10%, we're at 17%. Obviously, we're meeting the national standard. Are we meeting our community goal? No, we're not meeting our community goal. And so to say, this is how we're different. This is, this is what we think the challenges of the community are. And this is, this is where we are and where we want to be going to address Alderman's point. But I think, I think we owe that explanation. And I think it will, it will actually be helpful to the public to understand, this is our job, what we're doing right now, this is our job. And, and, and we do take it very seriously. And I think, and we've approached this in a very thoughtful way, and for which I thank all of you, because it's helpful to me personally, so.
Okay. Alderman, when?
This is more on the sort of practical nitty-gritty matters. I find that when we have a special order of business before a city council meeting, that we, that we all feel rushed. And it feels to me like we don't give things adequate time, because there are people waiting, you know, they have an issue. And they're not necessarily waiting on our special order of business, especially if it's a goal.
So it might be 10 o'clock, by the way.
Right, right. So-
Well, I meant, I meant on the non-APW PD meetings.
Okay, maybe, that, okay. So I, because I think we need an expansive amount of time because we're, brainstorming is not the right word, but we're, we're collaborating and listening to each other and having a time limit on it is not always, a time limit with people waiting for their issue to come forward. So I think that's important. Possibly a Saturday meeting, I don't know what people's ability to come in, but, you know, that, that gives us a little bit more time to think. And if it's just one topic or two topics, I think that would be helpful.
You know, if it's a Saturday or something like that, then we could certainly be making this one.
We could do two.
I think that when we do make the, you know, provide the information to the city manager's office in advance of this, we have to let them know what data slash information we need to have the conversation, so that they have, again, and I would hope that we can kind of get the request for the information out, you know, weeks in advance, so that you have time to look for stuff.
I think we've made it known about some of the information.
Sure. No, I think we've had plenty of folks who are checking this this evening.
And we've got some specific, you know, some really, very, very specific points and data requests.
And obviously, we don't have all of the, I mean, I have a, the staff that's here largely is the folks that will work and make all this happen. They're not necessarily the staff dealing with some of these issues. So we'll make sure that all the appropriate staff is in the room, as well as the staff.
I have one other question about facilities. Are they ranked with our parks, or are they separate?
I'm sorry?
Are our facilities, like, have the parks have like an A through F? Do the facilities have that?
Yes, I have a report, I had asked Laura for last year, I think.
Okay.
Every few years we do that. It's not, not exactly the same, but-
Okay.
Engineering does, from ones we're really concerned about to ones we're really, really concerned about.
She made a report, I think it had to prepare me and then let me across.
So city manager, perhaps at our next meeting, could suggest some scheduling options? So city manager, perhaps at our next meeting, you could suggest some scheduling options?
Sure. I mean, I, I think that based on what you've talked about, you know, the third Monday is a useful tool of this. That, that happens to be next Monday, February, on the 18th, which is already full of exciting things like streetlight master plans and police...
No, no, I think, I was just talking about on the 18th, let's propose some scheduling options.
Okay. So, so again, that takes us into the month of March, the third Monday meeting you've already canceled because of spring break for District 65 and District 202. Then, so that, there is no third Monday in March available. So if the council's really serious about Saturdays, I would certainly want to try to find a Saturday in the month of March. April has five Mondays and a, a third Monday that I don't believe has been spoken for April 15th. So if you're interested maybe in one Saturday in March and then using the 8th, we already, I think, had planned to talk about affordable housing on the 29th of April. I don't know if that's going too far into the future. Okay. So, but we can come back on the 18th. If the Saturday's real?
Could be real.
Yeah.
So we had a Saturday and a weekday meet, a weeknight meeting, we could probably do the, the three with the understanding that affordable housing would not be one of them. Is that correct?
It's already got its own dates, I think so.
Okay.
Can we have homework? So we are submitting some information that can be reconciled so that we don't have a complete working meeting, that we're doing some of that ahead of time?
Sure.
And so can we agree on what that is?
I think, well, I think a request for data for the information that you want for the different aspects that each of us respectively expect to be in the category. And these, these are broad categories, they're, they're big goals. So I expect that each of us will have a series of specific points under that category that they can be contrasted. But then also asking for what information you're going to need to, you know, be able to sit down and have that working conversation.
Of course, we already have some measurables in mind.
Of course, yeah, we'll share them. If you already have them, share them with, with the staff.
So we'll be, Mr. Mayor Portem, then, so we'll be proposing then two meetings, one on a Saturday, one on a weeknight. Would you like to try to do this all in the month of March?
Yes. Well, there's, spring break is in there, so...
Right, so March becomes complicated because of that.
March 25th. Is that March 25th?
Can you tell us, tell me when spring break is?
The week of March 25th.
The week of March, oh.
You know, I think it's the week of March 18th.